Sound good?
Good. Let us know what you're up to.
All right, thanks. Yeah, we're adding onto our building. We're excited to create space for future growth. Right now, we're at full capacity in our current building and then a little bit more. We actually expanded the building, did some renovation inside about two years ago to get more room, and we've filled that out. So, we're looking at adding this addition. We'd be occupying the first level in this first phase. It'd be seven additional offices, new break room, really nice large training room and conference room. And then the lower level would be our next phase of finishing off, and there'd be another 12 offices. So, it's all really laying the groundwork for the future, but we're growing here and growing up in our manufacturing facility, which is up in Pound, Wisconsin. So, pretty exciting times for us.
Any questions or comments? People ask me out in the community, "What do you guys do at Dairyland Electric?"
Yeah, we serve the -- we're primarily in the high-power utility and gas-oil distribution pipeline industry. We work with preventing corrosion on pipelines and basically protecting structures and people from bad things, shocks and, you know, broken pipes and flanges and leaks and such.
I can just provide a little historic perspective. I think this is a successful story to tell. This particular business sided on one of the parcels located out here with a vision of growing. They bought the additional lot. They had enough value to do so, and so they combined those two lots into one parcel. Right now is showing how their expansion plan was appropriate to accommodate that additional purchase of the land. Might not have been entirely necessary for this particular expansion, but certainly shows that they had committed to the community and invested in this site. So, we're glad to see it continue to grow out there.
Who was first? Go ahead.
I just have a sense the name of the business is Dairyland Electric. I'm just wondering if there's any provision or thought for any provision for potential electric car charging as part of your plan? Or has anybody even brought it up?
No, it's never been brought up. Totally different industry, for sure, but I'd say, I mean, our employer, our owner, Mike Tajik, I mean, he's certainly a very accommodating person, so I'd say, hey, if people start buying electric cars, we need to put charging stations in, you know, we'd be all over that. I mean, we truly do try to make life really easy for our employees.
All right. Alderson Bartlett, did you have your hand up?
Just curious, you had mentioned 12 offices. Are you planning to increase 12 people in this year?
Yes, it's actually seven new offices, I have it at the top, and then 12 down below. Certainly not this year, but what -- so, I help run the company with Mike. I'm Operations Manager. And what we've learned is that we put together a three- to five-year plan about a year and a half ago, and we're at our five-year plan already. So, we're in the process of building out the next, you know, three to five, and I would expect that we'd be -- I wouldn't be surprised if we're filling that up probably more in this six or seven year, but...
Great. Do you have a follow-up? Question actually for Rodney, I guess, just that covenants we're mentioning here. I know we're dealing with those on another matter, so I know this one meets all the covenant requirements. Just curious how that works in the Business Park. Does the city have a hand in this? The Business Park North Committee have a hand in developing the covenants and enforcing them?
The development of the covenants dates back to the mid-, early 90s, so the covenants are in place, and the Business Park North Committee is kind of the review committee that governs the covenants. So, that's where the Business Park North Committee met, reviewed the plans, agrees that they're consistent with the covenants. In this case aside, the Business Park North Committee recognizes that most of the covenant restrictions are really applicable zoning measures as well. So, we're hoping to find a way to dissolve the covenants, or at least the review process, because they still have to go through the Planning Commission review process, and most of the parcels are fully developed. Certainly, we're seeing some additions, but the primary intent was to capture the initial development of each site through that process.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Barman?
Just a question on the parking lot lighting. It was pointed out in the submittal here that the existing parking lot lighting will be sufficient to light the -- all the additional parking stalls.
Correct.
But I didn't see any kind of light study presented in our packet, so I'm just kind of curious as to how that would be, because I'm assuming the light was designed primarily to shine on the existing pavement. So, I wasn't sure how it would actually be able to light the rest of the new parking stalls.
Yep. I guess what I can tell you is we didn't do an additional light study at all.
Okay.
But we use indirect lighting, I guess downward lighting out of the soffits.
Okay.
You know, so we'd see that on the new addition as well. So, that western side where the parking would be, I mean, there's a drive that comes between the parking lot in the building, but there'd be downward lighting there.
Okay.
From our experience with our current building, there's an awful lot of light that makes its way to the parking lot there.
Okay. Now...
Mike was actually trying to -- the guy I was dealing with, Mike Holbeck.
Yes?
He was trying to use the previously approved photometric plan, which would still work in this case, so that's what we were trying to do.
It would still work even though you got a significant -- I mean, you got a good number of new stalls.
Yep.
But that photo plan showed how light would be on the other part portion of this?
Right. And, you know, most of their business isn't really at night anyway, but...
Correct. Yeah, we're basically eight to five, maybe till six.
Sure.
And the parking lot itself is getting a little wider, but it's not getting any longer than what it is right now.
This graphic kind of shows the existing limits of the pavement.
Okay.
And here is the additional area. As you can see, it's very close to the, you know, essentially 20 more feet to the north.
Okay.
And 15 or so to the east, then again 15 or 20 to the north, or to the south along the stalls there.
That helps. I wasn't aware that the pavement continued on as far as it does, so...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we're looking for a motion here. Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Last call for any discussion. Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item number six is a request by Forward Development Group to discuss a comprehensive plan amendment and for approval of a public participation plan for Kettle Park West Phase Two. It looks like we have a couple different bullet points here that we're going to be dealing on. Where would we like to start?
Well, we can get an overview from Mr. Bricker, and then we can walk through the process and steps that we're trying to implement here.
All right. And to -- good evening. I'm Jim Bricker and Senior Planner at JST Professional Services. Our client Forward Development Group is the background agency behind Kettle Park West and has their total pulling things together. Over the last six months or more, we've been talking about the next phase of Kettle Park as we move from basically where Jackson Street ends and going west, and how to convert the original plan, which showed multifamily units along Oak Opening Drive, a park in the middle, a couple of other varieties of land use, to move that into the concept plan that we've been presenting and talking about for the last several months, which is all single-family or primarily single-family detached residential uses, trying to come up with a wider variety of home sites and home opportunities out there. To do that, we need to, one, get started with a final plat, which is the very northern part of the project, and that will be coming to you shortly next. But related to that is how do you change the approved comprehensive plan, which is reflective of the original Kettle Park master plan, such that your development policy is consistent with what everyone's thinking is the next phase of Kettle Park? So, that's this process that starts as like two approval things going on parallel to each other. The final plat and zoning is the next formal thing to come up in optimistically, and procedurally we worked it out so that that would conclude in June, late June. But parallel to that is the amendment of the comprehensive plan, which really allows the much larger area to be brought into some form of consistency with development policy and what FDG feels that they can pull together. To do that, which is a much longer process and discussion process, the first thing we have to do is talk about the public participation plan, and that was our draft of how we think we can handle, meet all those requirements, get this up and get the discussion out there and get going so that we can get that process in play. So, there's a quick overview. I'll turn it over to Rodney.
This is a concept plan that you've seen in the past. What he was referring to, there needs to be some comprehensive plan changes in order to put into place aspects of this concept plan. Recall, the original plan had this being multifamily. The proposal now has this lower-density, single-family detached in the parkland area, and the street configuration has changed in this configuration. So, the public participation planning process now starts to invoke discussion about a concept plan to see if the -- those aspects of the comprehensive plan that I just discussed are appropriate for modification. And if they are, that would allow for this plating process to proceed in essentially kind of the core area of the plat. As Jim mentioned, the northern part of this plat area or concept plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we understand that that final plating of that area will move along quicker in a parallel track when we're discussing some of the potential comprehensive plan amendments that would occur in the central area of the plat area, if you will. The public participation plan outlines a process in which there is methods to engage the public, to solicit input related to these conceptual changes to the comprehensive plan in this region, and then allow for the Planning Commission and Council to consider those deliberations while they consider a potential amendment to the comprehensive plan. So, the draft, the public participation plan in your packet outlines steps that would be taken to solicit the public input related to this comprehensive plan process. This becomes a document, if adopted, that would then chart the course for review of a comprehensive plan amendment for this region.
Yeah, and I would just add that the changes that have been made are changes that were based on communication and discussion with staff, myself, Park and Rec Committee, and feedback from this group here as well. So, these aren't really changes that necessarily came solely from the developer. These are changes that came from various groups to help the developer design a plan that we think will be better than the original plan. So, that's kind of how we got here, and what we want to do is see whether or not this body can make a recommendation to Council as far as this public participation plan, which is in the -- I think there's a resolution in here that kind of outlines it in your packet.
Resolution along with the exhibit that outlines the process.
So, I guess, you know, initially, the question for this group is, is what we have included in the resolution and in the outlined plan, is that what you feel is appropriate process to go through for public participation? Or are there things that you think we need to add or delete or tweak or whatever as we have this conversation tonight? Anybody have it? Commissioner Seltzer?
Thank you. Does this -- and forgive me if I'm a little behind on all this, but does this include still, we are still planning that there'll be a northern exit and entrance to this development that we talked about previously? That is still part of this, that we aren't changing that?
Correct. One of the provisions in the Resolution 45 to 2016, when the city approved the preliminary plat, with the preliminary plat that's in place, one of those provisions was the interconnection of Oak Opening Drive to Deer Point. That is still in process. It's been -- there's been several meetings, discussions with the town of Rutland. I can report that they're -- they appear to be very open to that connection and not opposed or any way. There is a intergovernmental agreement currently being drafted by city staff that would then go to the town of Rutland and also to the common council, at least starting in the Finance Committee and moving up to the common council for that interconnection. That would take place regardless of the direction of the comprehensive plan amendment. That's related to the actual plating part.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I guess I do.
Okay, and then Alderman Barman can follow up after you're completed.
Okay. But then the provision to get this entry onto 51, right, that north road will enter into 51, we're still talking about some kind of access there. And my question would be, which was a question before, who's going to pay for those changes? And are further fundings, such as TIP fundings involved in that kind of, is that something that's going to be requested? And if so, shouldn't we decide that before we start making the plan or changing the plan without considering that?
The extent that I am aware of on this interconnection project, it's the FDG connecting Oak Opening Drive to Deer Point Road, the taper and narrowing it down, and that is being coordinated with the DOT's project to improve the Roby Road intersection with a roundabout and extension of that. And I can't remember how far the leg goes into Roby Road into the project, but it's all consistent with that, and that's a DOT. I don't know the funding mechanism, how that percentage funding, but that's primarily a DOT project, as I understand. Rodney may have more information.
Comprehensive plan would, in my belief, the comprehensive plan would ultimately look at the road network, street network, as well as the anticipated land uses, and it wouldn't identify particularly every source of funding that would be necessary to fulfill the plan. But it outlines the objectives that the city seems to meet the community's interest for density, open space, transportation, recreation. It evaluates those aspects of the area, and implementation is a phase that has to occur after the comprehensive plan would be amended.
At this point, we really, we don't have a request for any funding from the city, and if we did, I think that would be part of a negotiation for a developer's agreement at that point, which we're not at that point yet to really have that discussion. We have to get a plan approved first. So, it's kind of the chicken and the egg thing, if you would. But we're trying to get this plan. We feel that regardless, that if there is a request with this plan, it'll be far less than the initial proposal anyway because of the less amount of density required, less parkland dedication, which allowed Forward to be able to create more lots to sell, which is going to keep the cost, the requests down. But at this point, we don't have a number. They're still working on some things. That's really all we can report at this time. Did you have anything else? Otherwise, Commissioner Barman had something?
First off, I'd like to say I think this seems like a reasonable set of steps. There's only one, I think, possible revision I would want to add, but I guess my first question would be if this is typical to other public participation plans that the city has used in the past? I'm assuming it falls...
It is.
Okay.
It's very similar to previous processes we've used.
Okay. So, one question and one suggested revision. I'm assuming that the first bullet where it says the City Plan Commission will provide policy guidance, that doesn't include tonight or anything that's come before this. This is that will be a new opportunity that will exist after this particular plan is adopted.
Correct. I mean, obviously, they've heard discussion, but that's not the process. You know, this outlines another step where you'll continue to have input.
Very good. So, the one suggested revision I would pose, to me, a real key bullet here is the fourth one, which is the public event, and so I'm all for that. But right after that public event, it says the Plan Commission will review the proposed amendments and at their discretion recommend. I would like to see in that fifth bullet that the Plan Commission also looks at the results of that particular public event, because it says that KPW's, you're going to collect that input, and I think it's important for the commission to actually review that input.
So, my question would be is, what would you like this group to look for? I mean, I'm trying to get a feeling for what...
It's not really so much looking for anything. I just want to make sure that that, sometimes there's a disconnect. You have the public event, and the public comes and they make their thoughts known and it's recorded, and then the Plan Commission acts without even looking at it. And so, I want to make sure that it's part of our process and our responsibility as a commission to at least read through those notes, read through the transcription or the documentation of what the public actually shared at that particular event. I just want to make sure that the public knows that what they shared during that event will actually make it to us and that we'll look at it.
Okay.
Well noted. So, the fifth bullet point would be amended to something similar to the Plan Commission, following consideration of the public event documentation, the Plan Commission will consider...
Yeah, that will review the proposed amendment and input from the public at the earlier event, something along those lines. That way, at least, I want to make sure the public realizes and knows that it's worth their time to come to the event.
Okay. Any other...
I guess mine would be about the public event as well, just a, I don't know if we need to formalize it, but just what that's going to look like so that it is held when the public can attend. And I guess I'd like to see two, I guess, and to make sure it doesn't happen like a past design shret we had in the last two years that showed up on a Packers night, no one showed up. I just want to be careful when we plan that and how it's going to look, but I guess I'd like to see two of those possibly, if it's not too much work to do, so...
Did we have a date proposed, at least for one?
The initial calendar, we were looking at sometime the week of April 1st through the 5th. I know there's the election on the 2nd, so I'm thinking it's probably like Thursday the 4th. I know that was the one, the initial idea is we were trying to outline this calendar. I don't know that FDG has made a decision on the date. I think they're looking in that window, and I know they're debating where would be an appropriate place to have it. We had talked about if there's a venue out near this location, which I, to me, would be a good idea, you'd get out and kind of get a feel for standing, go outside the door and look out there, but it might be somewhere else within in town where we could accommodate. Maybe we had the last one over at the EMS building, as I recall.
Yeah, what method of communication would you use for that? Because the plan the council will be acting on is at their meeting on the 26th.
Sure.
So, distribution by the hub wouldn't occur.
At the very least, it'd be, you know, an advertisement notice in the paper, a box notice.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't look like a legal public notice hearing, as well as invites to the immediately surrounding properties. It was what, you know, our typical notices, I think it's 300 feet from the outside, so we'd pick all those properties, and they would get a postcard or something, a letter in the mail. That was the initial thought. I'm open to other suggestions.
That being said, you might have a difficult time getting it in the newspaper, given the newspaper would come out two days after the council meeting. So, hearing the interest in making that well-known ahead of time, you might have to push it back a week or something.
Yeah, in that case, if we can, to try to time those notices, maybe it's now the week, the second week in April rather than the first week in April.
Was there interest in...
There will be no Packer game in April, that much we know.
And we don't want to conflict with the...
But there are a number of other meetings and events, so we can certainly, you know, work on some potential dates.
Timing-wise, it'd be a late afternoon, early evening type. Because we'd want it available to as many people as could participate as possible.
You're anticipating a rolling event with maybe a presentation at a couple of different times at that event?
Mm-hmm. You know, it's because literally the, we're trying to do two things. One, we have a fairly good idea in the topics that will come up, and we wanted to be able to represent those, but not take it so far that, because I don't have the solution to all the topics yet, so I'm hoping that people will come with, you know, ideas and concerns that then we can come back, build the record, then say, "Here's the concern, here's how we would propose this could be handled." And that gets kind of that involvement, follow-up you're asking for as well.
Any other thoughts or questions or... So, at these public participation, is that we definitely, we'd need a quorum there?
It's not an event that the city or Planning Commission is running.
So, who would record the...
We would take care of all the recordation and things like that. And certainly, if you wanted to include in the announcement that a quorum of members may be present, it's really not an official meeting. We'd love to have you all there.
We would do that. We just don't know, depending on the date, if everyone's going to be available, and obviously, it's important that we get the results of that for those that aren't there.
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Go ahead, Gary.
My question would be, what method of collecting the data, the information coming from those citizens would you be using? How are you going to do that? Are you going to just begin?
We would have comment cards available, as well as the two, probably two of us that would be involved in the actual conversations during that meeting, would be taking notes and summarizing things and certainly...
Would be subjective, not objective.
And we certainly like people, if they want more information, we would request that they provide an email address or something so that we can disseminate what we've generated afterwards to everybody.
Would you then submit that to us in a summarized form or...
Yeah, it'd be a, I'm envisioning maybe a summary memo of what had happened with everyone's comment cards, copies of them attached, so you could...
Along with the cards.
I wouldn't want to presume to interpret everyone's opinion. And then we would have a kind of our, I would say our, but FDG's response to the major issues and how we would propose handling it.
Any other questions or... Go ahead, Tom.
Well, I think this all sounds good, so I'm not trying to nitpick, but wouldn't it be good to have some kind of questionnaire at that meeting, when the meeting's over, that people could fill out and hand in that actually had a set of questions that would lead to some opinion rather than commentary cards sent in to, you know, to your company for you to interpret and then come back to us? I mean, I think it might be thought about to have an actual questionnaire that would ask some key questions and where people are thinking about it. And even if it's, they're good ideas that maybe are perceived not that well, then it's a chance to react to that. Something standardized that could be, you know, are you in favor of this or are you not or that kind of...
Or at least identify like major subjects?
Yes.
I don't want to get so far down the road that I'm influencing the commentary by the question, but you know, if there's, you know, what's your, or what's your thoughts about the open space that's shown on the plan or something like that? Maybe I could get to that point without directing, influencing the opinion.
All right.
Assuming this will be coming back to us, then...
This would not, if, we're trying to see if there is aspects of the public participation plan that would be modified. Right now, I've got the one that we talked about with Mr. Barman, and if this comes out of this committee, this would go to the planning, or to the City Council for consideration, the plan would be.
And it would be two weeks from tomorrow. It would be at the City Council.
So, if there's no further additions or changes, I would make the recommendation to Council as amended.
Okay.
With Mr. Barman's...
With, yeah, with Mr. Barman's amendment.
Okay.
The comment about considering public input.
Yep.
Before, yep. Okay.
And then anything you could do to address Ald...
Sure.
Commissioner Seltzer's concerns into the questionnaire.
Especially if you have topics that you want brought up, you know... Especially if you have topics that you want brought up, you know, all right, let me know. Cause then we can kind of say, you know, this is an important area for the community. Here are topics that have been identified.
Yeah. You guys can email your topics to Rodney and he can consolidate, combine them and, and email them to Jim. How's that sound? If you have anything in the next, you know, week or so, or, or even before it gets to council. There may even be some feedback from the council on what they would want to see in there as well. We could certainly do that. So there's a motion. Was there a second? I didn't hear a second one yet.
I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So that'll be at the council in two weeks from tomorrow. So I imagine one of you guys will be there for that.
Somebody would be there.
Okay. Then you guys can forward us your thoughts. All right, thank you. Future agenda item? Anything on our radar?
Certainly this will be, this certainly will be, aspects of the Kettle Park West project will continue to be on our docket.
Do we have a public hearing then in April as well already?
Yep.
Ordinance, be ordinance.
Oh yeah, be ordinance.
Shouldn't ordinance.
So, can mark that on your calendar for that meeting. We'll be talking about that, so that'll be on there. Is there any other ordinances that we're working on or anything you anticipate?
We have a whole list of them, but we're not always bringing them back every meeting. We're, we're trying to fit them in, so there is a list.
In between all the other things that we're trying to, Michael's trying to get things packed up, so.
Yeah.
We're ready to go. So a lot of our documents are going to be available electronically now that we have paper copies for, so if you guys need anything.
How many departments are you moving over there?
Most.
Most of them?
Yeah.
So you're going to leave, obviously, the, I promise these are.
Yeah. They're going to expand and then we're talking to some folks about where they want to be. So I'll let you know how those conversations go.
You have your room over there, you got the whole basement plus the first floor.
Rodney's got it all planned out, don't you?
We're working through some items, yes.
We've got some ideas. Anything else for a future agenda item?
Is Rodney going to be in the drive-through?
Maybe, that's a possibility.
You never know where, where he'll be. He seems to be everywhere else, so.
Oh, do adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And who was the second? Caravaggio? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you. Guys, have a good night.